I'll call to order the 21st meeting of the American City Council, meeting in regular session on Monday, November 10th, 2014. Please note, if you wish to be heard at this meeting, please sign the speaker list provided on the table at the side of the council chamber. That's right over here. The President has the right to limit the amount of time each speaker has for each agenda item. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak for each agenda item. We will have the invocation led by Reverend Warren Litchfield, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Mayor Mow.
Almighty God, we gather this evening to conduct the business of this city. We offer our prayer for our mayor, for the President, for the members of the City Council, and for all in authority, granted to them a sense of justice, strength, and wisdom as they perform their duty in behalf of all thy people. We commend this nation, our armed forces, our fine rescue, our law enforcement in thy people, to their merciful care and understanding. Remember those upon a bed of affliction; comfort those amorn. Hear our prayer in the name of the one who is Lord of life. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under thy indivisible liberty and justice.
Ms. Ralph, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Crary?
Here.
Ms. Nicholas?
Here.
Mr. Ricks?
Here.
Mr. Laz?
Here.
President Smalls?
Here.
Mayor Mow?
Here. Agenda item five is the approval of the minutes of the 19th meeting of the American City Council on October 15th, and the 20th meeting of October 27th, 2014. Council, if there are no changes or corrections, I will entertain a motion to approve. So moved. Thank you, Councilman Laz.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ralph, please call for the vote.
Mr. Laz?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes. Agenda item six is the report of the Mayor and City Council, and tonight I'll start with Councilwoman Nicholas.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to thank all of the city departments that were involved in... I'd like to thank all of the city departments that were involved in trick-or-treat on Main Street. We had a great time. It was very well attended. Also, yesterday, attended the March Life Tribute Center that's up on Sandy Springs. I think it was well attended and a very nice event. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilman Laz?
Thank you, Mr. President. As Ms. Nicholas mentioned, we had a successful trick-or-treat on Main Street. And special thanks to the men and women of our Laurel Police Department and the auxiliary for ensuring that everyone was safe. Safe. Now, the following night, we had trick-or-treat in Laurel. We had about 125 trick-or-treaters come to our door. And again, a special thanks to the men and women of our Laurel Police Department for being visible in the streets to ensure the safety of our trick-or-treaters. Sunday, November 2nd, I attended Taste of Laurel at the museum. Actually, it was in the pool room, but the museum, sponsored by the museum. They had approximately 230 people that turned out for this wonderful event. Thursday, we had the Community Redevelopment Authority meeting here at City Hall, moving ahead on some issues. I want to thank Public Works for getting the old sign off the front of the theater. Looks... It's a vast improvement, and the facade presents itself a bit better. Leave that for the President. Saturday, attended BJ's Restaurant opening to benefit Fightos for Freedom. Fightos for Freedom does a wonderful job here in the city for many, many people in preparing dogs to help people that are... that need that help. November 11th is Veterans Day, a recognized holiday for most, but more importantly, a time to pause and thank those who have helped to preserve our freedoms. Please take time to acknowledge our veterans who live and work alongside us. I want to thank all of our veterans, past and present, for their patriotism, service, and sacrifice for our country. I'd like to offer condolences to the family of Eric Warman. Eric grew up in Laurel Hills, and when he became an adult, he settled in the old part of Laurel and had a local business. We're gonna miss Eric. He had a nice smile on his face all the time. Finally, I want to recognize the Boy Scouts that are here with us tonight. I think they're all working on citizenship. No, they're all working on their communications merit badge and citizenship in the nation, in the community. Some of them. So we've got Billy Sellers, Patrick Jar, Jason Hamilton, Ryan Poor, Colin Meyer, TJ Carter, Ryan McDonald, and Nate R. Day, and somebody came in late. What's your name, young man? Stand up. What's your name? Tell it out.
I'm John Brown.
Okay. And we're gonna have one person that's gonna speak for the scouts that are here, and he's not gonna speak in his other language, which is Mandarin Chinese. I think he's gonna say a few words in English.
Hello, my name is Patrick Jar from Troop 602. This is part of the Troop 602, and we are here to complete the communications and citizenship and the nation merit badge on listening to hearing on the town hall, and then listen to the mayor talk about, and we need to write down some, like, opposing sides. For citizenship and the nation is budget, and for the communications, it's two opposing sides.
Thank you for coming. These are the leaders of tomorrow, folks. Young men that attain Eagle Scouts, the rank of Eagle Scout, and that's what they're working toward. The Presidents, Generals, they've gone into space. These will be the leaders of tomorrow. So we appreciate your coming, and we appreciate the parents that push ya. My parents pushed me 50 years ago, the same as yours are pushing you. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Laz. Councilman Ricks?
I'd like to thank my fellow council members for attending with me some of the grand openings we've been having out at the Town Center. And although we're very tickled that that's all come into fruition, it's very interesting to note the number of jobs that we're now going to have here in the city of Laurel. I mean, in BJ's Brew House alone, there's 146 employees that have regular jobs, that haven't had jobs for a long, long time. The other interesting part that I found out was that places like the Brew House and Mission Barbecue, they actually bring in a team of people from all across the country that, while they're training their new staff, they're staying here in Laurel at some of our hotels for up to two weeks. So those revenues also, including the new jobs that we're having, it's very, very interesting to know that that kind of revenue is being generated as well. So I want to thank everybody, and I look forward to the rest of the grand openings that we're having on the 15th and the 19th. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks. Councilwoman Crary?
Thank you, Mr. President. On the November 1st, I attended the Laurel Community Block Party, and I'd like to thank the Chief of Police and also the police members that attended and put on a fine party in spite of the cold weather, in addition to the volunteer firefighters that were there. On November 4th, we had a little election in the state and city. I'd like to congratulate the winners, and I'd like to thank the losers for their grace and understanding, and thank them for their public service, and hope they continue in the community with their public service, perhaps in a different position. I'd like to thank Cromwell Station, the condo association, for inviting us over. Mr. Ricks was referring to the jobs in the community that are growing. I suspect that whoever does alteration on waistbands will be very busy during the next year if we keep doing these openings of restaurants. Thank you. That's my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Crary. On Wednesday, November 26th, beginning at 5:00 PM, St. Mark's Church will hold its annual Thanksgiving dinner for the homeless. The church is asking for any contributions or donations that the community might want to make to help feed the homeless. As I talk about, you know, contributions and giving, I want to point out that not just St. Mark's Church, but Lars and other community organizations in our community have food banks. This is the time of year, especially when there's a great need for contributions of food and other donations. So as we're preparing ourselves for Thanksgiving, remember those who don't have the blessings that we have, and ask that you find a church or some type of food bank or organization that gives back to those who are less fortunate than we are, and contribute, not just during the Thanksgiving season, but throughout. That's my report. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple things, condolences to the family of Art Stop. Art was a life member of the Laurel Fire Department, and several relatives work here at city government, and Art was way too young to pass away, and just a fine individual. And I want to thank all the forces here at city government, as well as the Laurel Fire Department, for their hard work in giving him a nice send-off. Also, Cynthia Woods, who's a member of our Environmental Affairs Committee, passing of her mother, wish her the very best and condolences. Speedy Recovery wishes to PFC Bradley King from the Laurel Police Department, as well as Jack Brock, our department head in the Planning and Zoning Department, wish them a speedy recovery as well. I said, during the work session, we are, again, still tweaking things in here, the microphones and the lighting and things, so we request your feedback. If there's issues, and you see something or don't hear something, please let us know so we can continue to, like the mic dropped just then, as we continue to work through some of these bugs. We did have the ribbon-cutting ceremony at Planet Fitness over at the... of 198. I want to thank them. That area was just annexed into the city about a month or so ago, but Planet Fitness is off to a great start, and we wish them the very best and thank them for their invitation. The Laurel Board of Trade Trick-or-Treat on Main Street, again, want to thank the Board of Trade, as well as the many volunteers that helped out in our city staff and Police Department in particular for their hard work to make it as safe. It is getting very difficult to keep that street open, so we are looking at all the things for next year if it continues to grow. But again, thank all those city forces for their hard work, and the Board of Trade in particular. The City of Laurel Trick-or-Treat, again, I think Councilman Laz did acknowledge our Police Department in particular, and I saw they get a letter about the work that they did, and I want to thank them for keeping their eye on what was going on out there during trick-or-treating. Grace Boutique, boutique, we did have the opportunity to attend the grand opening and ribbon-cutting at 401 Main Street. I want to wish them the very best and thank them for their invitation. Members of the council were there as well, and I think that sends a strong signal when we show up for those types of events, that we're behind them, and we hope that they continue to succeed. Toys for Tots, we are working with the Methodist Churches, heard our council president talk about. There are boxes, collection boxes, at all of our city facilities, as well as drop-offs for non-perishable food. You can drop off here or at any of the city buildings. That food will be given to Lars, which we have done every year. Speaking of Lars, they have their annual Turkey Trot on Thanksgiving Day, so if you want to get out there and run a little bit, or there's a fund walk, or donate some money to a great cause, I encourage you to do that. The Laurel Community Block Party, sponsored by the Laurel Police Chief and Police Department and his advisory committee, again, was one of those days, a little cold, had a little rain. It went off. It... Quite a few people show up, and I thought it was well-attended for what was happening outside. And again, Chief, thank you, and we hope that you all will continue that as an annual event. Mission Barbecue, we had the fundraisers for both the Fire Department and the Rescue Squad, as well as the fundraiser for the Laurel Police Department. Want to thank Mission Barbecue for their continued support for fundraising, for our public safety agencies. They also had one that Friday night for wounded warriors. And then today was their official grand opening and ribbon-cutting. We want to wish them the very best and thank them for all their support. They're... seem like a great organization. We look forward to working with them. March Life Tribute Center had the opportunity to attend their open house, which is up on Sandy Spring Road, and wish them the very best and thank them for the opportunity to be with them. And tomorrow, Veterans Day, Mission Barbecue will host Veterans Day and active military, so you can stop by and get a sandwich from them as well. They open at 11:00 AM tomorrow. We did have the grand opening... I'm sorry, on November the 15th, the grand opening and ribbon-cutting celebration for the Town Center at Laurel will start at 3:00 until 6:30. We invite the public and encourage you to come out and take part. Tomorrow, the opening, grand opening of Harris Teeter will open, and at 5:30 tomorrow evening, I think it's until 6... At 5:30 until 9:00, there'll be a Taste of Harris Teeter, so we encourage you to take part in Harris Teeter. That will be the first in Prince George's County, so it's a first for us here in Laurel, and we congratulate them and wish them the very best. November the 22nd, there'll be a tree lighting also from 3:30 to 4:00 over at the Town Center at Laurel. Regal Theaters will have their soft openings on the 16th, 17th, and 18th of next week. And you're... No reservations, you just show up, right, Lou? Just show up for that. And then they'll have their official opening on the 20th, 19th? So look for that. I think we had the opportunity to tour that place. It's very interesting, although they have the big padded seats where you can... All the theater, you can put your feet up, all sorts of stuff. Problem is, I'm afraid I'll fall asleep in there, so it'd be too comfortable. But great, great organization, and we look forward to many years with Regal Theaters. Suppose I have a couple of presentations. I'm gonna go down. See if I'm dropping. Yeah? I have a proclamation that I want to read out tonight. It's proclamation 2014-22. Whereas the city of Laurel was incorporated in 1870, and whereas Maryland is home to 156 other municipalities, whereas municipal government represents the most responsive form of government, with citizens being able to directly access their elected officials, and whereas municipal government has continuously fostered a strong foundation for government service and cooperation at the county, state, and federal levels of government, and whereas municipalities have also enhanced the quality of life with a respective residents by maintaining natural and historical sites and structures, and helping to make the city of Laurel, Maryland, a great place to live, work, and explore. Therefore, I, Craig Mow, Mayor of the City of Laurel, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2014 as Municipal Government Works Week. I'm gonna ask our clerk to the City Council, and actually, I'm gonna ask our council member to come down, Donna Crary, who's a member of the Maryland Municipal League as well, and we'll present this to them, and they may have some comments as well. Come on, we'll wait for her to up. Come on.
Thank you, Mayor. We would like to, during the month of November, we want to highlight our departments and encourage our citizens to come out and see what a fine job all of your... all our employees do. And out of 157 cities, Laurel is the best. Laurel is the best. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
you'll see that'll take part in Municipal Government Month, and we'll put that out in either online tweeting and Facebook and all those things that everybody uses nowadays. As I said, tomorrow is Veterans Day. We want to take this opportunity to thank our men and women in military active service, as well as those veterans. I wanted to recognize several of our team here at Laurel that are veterans, and I'd like them to come down. I'm gonna make a little presentation, but let us know what branch of the service that they were in, if they want to say anything. First, let me ask Bob Manzi, our city attorney. Bob, you want to come up? I've got a little presentation for you on behalf of the American City Council. This is our challenge code with our city seal on it that we're gonna present to each of our veterans, and you only got 30 seconds. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I was a first lieutenant artillery in the US Army, 1970 to '72.
And Bob's still fighting the wars for us. He's our city attorney, so thank you, Bob. Next is a gentleman who helped me out just now, make sure the batteries are charged, Mr. Brian Lau from our IT department. Brian? I hope the mic doesn't go bad on you.
Hi, Brian Lau. I was there keeping Bob safe. Sergeant, Infantry, Danang Fubai Chulai. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next, a couple members of our council. Our council member, Fred Smalls. Fred, if you'd come on down.
I served US Army, Third Infantry, the Old Guard. I was a grunt. I learned how to march. They taught me how to carry a flag, and I had the honor of working at... marching the tune of the unknowns, as well as putting to rest a number of our Vietnam War heroes.
Doesn't he look like an Old Guard member? Next is Councilman Mike Les. Mike? Eagle Scout, too, I forgot about that. Was the United States Coast Guard from 1966 to '68, and yes, the Coast Guard was in Vietnam. About a third of them, third of the ships were there, and I was on a Weather High Endurance Cutter. We have other members that are members, are vets, here in the city of Laurel and City Hall, and I just wanted to acknowledge those that were here. Want to again thank all of our men and women in uniform who continue to serve, as well as those veterans. And they've made my life better and easier, I should say, and I know others feel the same way. So thank you all very much, and thank you for the opportunity to allow me to recognize these individuals. Mr. President, my last comments before you is the nomination of Rob Farre for the Director of Park... Director of Park... Director of Public Works. Sorry about that, Rob. Mike, as I sent a letter to you with his bio, Rob's been with us for a long time, very knowledgeable, I think, very capable individual, and I know he'll do the job, and he'll do it very well, and I would ask for your confirmation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, we have before us the nomination for Mr. Farre. What's your pleasure?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Crary?
I recommend Rob Farre for Director of Public Works.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ralph, please call a roll.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Laz?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes, and congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President. concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll move to Agenda Item Eight, is a general public hearing. I'll open the general public hearing at 7:26. I have no one signed up to speak during the general public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the general public hearing at 7:26. Agenda Item Nine is consideration of a recommendation to extend a contract for the reconstruction of the 300 block of Montgomery Street. Mr. Farre?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, what we've got is a project scope to do some concrete work for the sidewalks, ADA ramps, melon overlay, and resurface the entire 300 block of Montgomery Street. We had awarded a contract recently to MT Laney to do the 1,110 block of Montgomery Street, and at this time, they had submitted a bid to continue that contract. Funding is in the 2015 CIP for Montgomery Street, and it is recommended that we extend this contract to MT Laney for $117,379 and some change, saving the city roughly $82,000.
Thank you, Mr. Farre. Council, we did discuss this at our recent work session. What's your pleasure?
The President, I move for adoption.
Thank you. Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ralph, please call a roll.
Mr. Laz?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes. Agenda Item 10. Agenda Item 10 is introduction to first public hearing on ordinance number 1815, text amendment number 236, in ordinance to amend Chapter 20, land development and subdivision, Article 1, zoning, Division 5, zoning districts of the Laurel City Code, providing an effective date. I read the title into the record for the first reading. I'll open the public hearing at 7:28. I have two people signed up to speak. Sharon Harris? You don't want to speak? That's fine. Okay. I also have Patty Waters? Yes. Does Waters, if you'll give your name and address for the record, please?
I turned it off. So hit the bottom button there, turn to green.
Good evening. My name is Patty Waters. I'm the owner of 604 Main Street. I'm here to show and voice of work... I'm here to show and voice of support for Ms. Harris with the business idea of a cigar lounge and the possibility of this business operating in my six oh four Main Street commercial property.
Works perfectly. Thank you. I have no one else signed up. You want to speak now? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Sharon. I'm Lynn Harris, and I am the only lady who likes to open up a cigar lounge on Main Street in Laurel. And I'm here to introduce myself, and whatever I need to do to make it happen, I want to do that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at seven thirty. A second public hearing with possible action will be held on Monday, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, at seven o'clock PM. Agenda Item Eleven is the introduction of first public hearing on ordinance number one eight one nine, in ordinance to amend the city of Laurel employee retirement plan to extend the deferred retirement option plan. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. I'll open the public hearing at seven thirty-one. Mr. Green?
The city's deferred retirement option plan or drop is due to expire on December thirty-first of this year. This legislation would extend the drop for the employee plan five years to December thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen. It also provides that once a drop participant leaves city employment, they must remove their drop funds from the city's trust within ninety days, or it will be paid out in cash and taxes provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at seven thirty-two. A second public hearing with possible action will be held on Monday, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, at seven o'clock PM. Agenda Item Twelve is the introduction of first public hearing on ordinance number one eight two zero, in ordinance to amend the city of Laurel police retirement plan to extend the deferred retirement option plan. I read the title into the record for the first reading. I'll open the public hearing at seven thirty-two. Mr. Green?
This ordinance would do essentially the same for the police plan as the previous ordinance for the employee plan, with the exception that it would decrease the length of time that an employee can participate in the drop from seven years to five years under the police plan.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at seven thirty-three. Second public hearing with possible action will be held on Monday, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, at seven o'clock PM. Agenda Item Thirteen is introduction to first public hearing on ordinance number one eight two one, in ordinance to amend the city of Laurel employee retirement plan as it relates to interest accruals on participant contributions. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. I'll open the public hearing at seven thirty-three. Mr. Green?
Yes. This ordinance would provide that current employees of the plans will continue to accrue interest on their accumulated contributions at the rate of five percent compounded annually. And future employees hired before July one of two thousand and fifteen will accrue interest on their accumulated contributions at the rate of five percent compounded annually. And future employees hired on or after July one of two thousand and fifteen will accrue interest on their accumulated contributions at the rate of three percent compounded annually. It also provides that once a non-vested plan participant leaves city employment, they will cease earning interest on their accumulated contributions at the later of January one, two thousand and fifteen, or ninety days after they leave city employment.
Thank you, Mr. Green. I have no one signed up to speak for this agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at seven thirty-four. Second public hearing with possible action will be held at the Marion City Council meeting on Monday, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, at seven o'clock PM. Agenda Item Fourteen is introduction and first public hearing on ordinance number one eight two two, in ordinance to amend the city of Laurel police retirement plan as it relates to interest accruals on participant contributions. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. I'll open the public hearing at seven thirty-five. Mr. Green?
This ordinance has the exact same provisions that we just discussed for the employee plan, except that it applies to the police plan.
Thank you, Mr. Green. I have no one signed up to speak on this agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at seven thirty-five. A second public hearing with possible action will be held at the Marion City Council meeting on Monday, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, at seven o'clock PM. Agenda Item Fifteen is the introduction of first public hearing on ordinance number one eight two three, in ordinance to amend the operating budget of the Marion City Council of Laurel, Maryland for fiscal year July one, two thousand and fourteen, through June thirty, two thousand and fifteen. I've read the title into the record for the first reading. I'll open the public hearing at seven thirty-six.